Okay. Okay, we're going to call the meeting back to order here. If I could just have everybody, you don't have to sit, but you got to quiet down for a second. Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to accept item H7.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Loebert?
In the interest of time, seeing as how we're almost at 1:00 now and there's a lot left, I'm going to move to continue three items here. If there are any cards or if anyone's come to speak on them, I would ask that we give them their time to speak now, just because they've waited as long as they have. I'd move to continue I's in India 2, J's in Juliet 2, and J's in Juliet 5 to the next meeting.
I'm sorry, sir, I 2?
I 2, J 2, J 5. I just think that'll enable folks to get their other items heard a little faster here.
What was it, J 2?
J 5.
Yes, ma'am.
There's only cards on item J 2.
So item J 2 and item J 5?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I 2, J 2, J 5.
Okay. And after the cards, I second this motion, ma'am.
I'm sorry, repeat that one more time because I was looking at the cards.
I 2, J 2, and J 5.
Well, they're your items, so I don't have a problem with it. Does anybody else have an issue with it?
They're not all my items, but...
No, not exactly, but they mostly pertain to you as far as the one...
Do you want them to come back to the zoning meeting?
If that's okay with everyone, I think that may even be better.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Will that work for everyone?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
So do we need a motion on that?
That's still moved.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So items I 2, J 2, and J 5 have been moved to the zoning meeting, next meeting, in the interest of time, because this is probably one of the heaviest agendas we've had, and we have a lot of people that are going to speak on other issues. So we'll move on to item I 3.
Just real briefly, if I may, as far as folks that have cards, is it appropriate that we give them the option to speak now, just because they've waited as long as they have? It looks like there's only one individual present anyway.
You mean for... You're talking about...
For any that were polled, I think there were only two cards at all.
There was, for item J 2, there was two cards.
But other than that, I don't think there were any, but for the two that put cards in, just since they waited...
Okay.
Hours.
Mr. Fleming right there, I didn't see him.
Okay. Mr. Toby?
Thank you. Charles Toby.
Gotcha.
The Bushes at Point Eden, US 1. And I don't have a house, I don't have any property, and it's public speaking. I went to first public speaking at Palm Shores Town Hall, and I went to, and I did speak about how they're going to destroy the environment and everything, and they expressed that my voice has not recognized in their town. And it continued, and when I come up here, I was on the agenda for my big problems that I carry on my back. And I was on the agenda, and I was coming up to ask the lieutenant, now a lieutenant, but at the time, he was a sergeant, and I had my video camera, so I could video and record all the procedures. And I went to ask him, and he escorted me out and told me if I come back, I'll be arrested. So I didn't come back. So then it progressed, and now Brevard County has permanent jurisdiction over my property, which nobody will take a look at, and nobody does anything. And we're talking about public speaking, and when I went down to speak about the lagoon at the Lagoon House, I told the officer I was having a party outside. I'm outside talking on the phone with my mom, windy, raining, talking to my mom, telling her I'm just about to speak, and she should come and pick me up. So they escorted me off the property, and it would have been further had the Florida Wildlife Commission had not joined in and escorted me off the property. And there's no relevance to any of it. I'm still wondering why I was escorted and told I would be arrested, as well as the other things. And, oh, yeah, the little lagoon looks great, and I did my work before summer, and I hope everybody's happy with it. And I still hold that I do the most important part of the balancing of the lagoon, and please take it in consideration. And also to donate blood this Friday. If you can't do anything else for our county or anything, you can donate blood and save a life, and that's all I'm prepared for at this time. And at the meeting, Thursday meeting, zoning, whatever it is, I'll bring some extra information. I'll be more prepared about my, what would you call it? Would it be prejudice? Why aren't I allowed to speak? Oh, no. I wasn't even allowed in the town of Palm Shores or any of the, anywhere. And I go through their town, and they want to threaten me with arrest or being shot or being tased or, what was the other one? Oh, Baker acted because I'm acting irrational. I'm still waiting for a valid reason. Thank you, and feelings aren't a reason, it's just a feeling. Have a nice day, and I'll be back, hopefully.
Okay, this is for item J 2. I wasn't sure if Mr. Toby was going to talk about J 2, and he was halfway through, so I didn't want to interrupt him. Matt Fleming?
Is this for J 2?
Yes.
I'll be back on the fifth.
Okay. All right. So on to I 3.
This is the North Merritt Island...
Oh. Got it. Sorry.
These are options for the board to consider for reducing flood risk on North Merritt Island. Back in November of last year, the board received the North Merritt Island Small Area Study and authorized staff to move forward with developing a flood model for the area. That work has proceeded. Phase 1 is complete. Phase 2 requires selection of an engineer to input all of the recently collected survey data and develop a model that can be used to, by the county and developers, to ensure that future development does not result in any off-site impacts to neighbors. That RFP for Phase 2 is approved and ready and should post this week on Thursday. Then last, at the last meeting on August 6th, the county commission directed staff to bring back options for the board to consider how to avoid or mitigate the potential of future development contributing to existing flooding issues on North Merritt Island in the interim while that model is still underway, under development. So we pulled together six options. Option 1 is waiting for the model. Option 2 is modifying the code or how we determine compliance with the code to require that the engineers submitting development plans certify that their development design will have no adverse impact on the community. Option 3 is a partial moratorium that sets specific performance measures for development that does proceed. So the moratorium would be on development that does not meet two specific performance standards. The first performance standard is that the owner or engineer demonstrates there's no increased volume of water, stormwater, discharged into the floodplains of North Merritt Island. And the second performance standard is that the property owner or engineer provide compensatory storage for any fill placed in the floodplain on North Merritt Island. Option 4 would be adopting an area of special concern for North Merritt Island with specific additional stormwater and storage requirements specific to that area. Option 5 is changing both the code and the comprehensive plan definitions of floodplain to better address the situation on North Merritt Island, which doesn't fit very well the current definitions in the code and comp plan for riverine and estering floodplains. And option 6 is to buy out properties in the floodplain in North Merritt Island, or buy out the development rights for those properties.
Commissioner Loebert?
I appreciate what you've done in terms of putting this together. I think that the long-term solutions are going to come when we get the stormwater model, but in the meanwhile, looking at the other options that are available to us, the one that I would rule out, at least initially based on concerns identified by county legal, is option 4. I can tell you that option 2 is interesting, option 3 is interesting, option 5 is interesting, and option 6, in terms of buying development rights, if we did that, I would, instead of buying the properties outright, I would look to buy rights for some of them that are specifically identified as areas of concern by natural resources for a period of time to lease them essentially, to bridge the gap between now and when we get the model back or the drainage study results back that give us the model. So I'm flexible in terms of how I do this. I just don't want to see a situation that's already bad worsen between now and when we get that drainage study back. So I'm flexible, but, you know, I definitely would like to see something done. And if we do a moratorium, I would have it the shortest possible moratorium that we could do to get us to that point, so maybe look at 364 days to keep it under a year. I just don't know where other folks are at with respect to this, and I imagine there are probably some cards that have been put in as well.
Mr. Ratterman? And after Jack Ratterman, Teri White?
Hello, my name is Jack Ratterman. I live at 568 East Hall Road in Merritt Island, and I'm here representing the North Merritt Island Homeowners Association as their president. And we've gone over the options, and 3 is the one that we think would be a good one for, to a partial moratorium on new development and fill until the flooding study is completed in the fall of 2020. Also in there, it says there's supposed to be a certificate supplied by an engineer saying that there wouldn't be undue harm to the other properties. But is there a penalty if the engineer gets it wrong? You know, is the engineer going to be like the weatherman on Channel 6? If he gets it wrong, there's no penalty. So we would like to have something in there. And then the number 5, the 5 option, the change of code where we would have compensatory storage and that we would be declared a riverine instead of an estering floodplain. And I like to say that our organization, we represent the 500 paid members, the 200 unpaid members, and then there's other members that, on the island, that are not in either group. For example, I was called out by Mrs. Primrose and Holly Babcock, both live on Horseshoe Bend, and for two hours, they showed me they're flooding. One's a widow and one's in a mobilized wheelchair. So those folks are not very aggressive, very passive, but the water still comes up on their property and to their door. So, you know, we're asking you to also think about those people and not just the ones that show up here. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I just real briefly, in response to that?
Can we wait till the end, if you don't mind?
Sure, if you'd like.
Teri White? And after Teri, Darlene Hunt?
Hi, my name is Teri White. I live at 5595 Joseph Court on North Merritt Island. I've only got a couple of quick comments. Darlene and I have been communicating, she's got most of the comments and that, but the options, see option 3, having some positives in it, and option 5. So I look at a little bit of a combination of the two of those from my personal point of view. And then the other comment I had is, on the last meeting, someone made the comment that maybe I shouldn't have moved there 30 years ago if I didn't want to live in a place that flooded. Well, guess what? 30 years ago, it didn't flood. Look at all the development that has happened on North Merritt Island in the last 30 years, and that's why I get a lot of water. And also the way the county has taken to control the stormwater and remove the stormwater. They've got a lot of things in effect, but 30 years ago, none of those were there, none of the pumps were there, and I didn't get all this water. So, all right, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Darlene?
Thank you, Madam Chair, commissioners and staff. My name is Darlene Hunt. I live at 125 West Chrisifully Road on North Merritt Island. Thank you for allowing me to speak about staff's proposed options to reduce flood risk from future development on North Merritt Island. We're in an unparalleled period of time on North Merritt Island of continued flooding of current properties and rapid residential development with higher densities. I've been speaking with others who've been involved with the Small Area Study and attended your August 6 meeting where this subject was discussed, people like Mary Swar and Phil Bernardo, who couldn't be here today. And after some very thoughtful deliberation, this is what we hope you'll agree to. Option 5, change the code and comprehensive plan definitions to better define North Merritt Island as riverine floodplain. This allows for some compensatory storage, flood volume restrictions, and the ability to transfer development densities. And this needs to be done in parallel with option 3, which is a partial moratorium on new development and fill until the flood model is completed in late 2020, or 365 days. I can't help but mention to you, well, I was going through some files, and I ran on to a study that was done in July 1996, 1996, comprehensive study with recommendations on North Merritt Island flooding issues. The study was done by the engineering firm Post-Bunkley-Shu &amp; Jernigan. Cost us $125,000 to do 23 years ago. I'm going to, I don't know if staff has been looking at that. I mean, it's a beautiful study. It's got costs and different areas, and I really would like to know how this compares to where we are now. And I even scanned the whole thing, and so if you want me to email you a copy, I can. Anyway, I've told you which 2 I prefer, and I'd like to thank you, Madam Chair and commissioners, for your patience and leadership in trying to help the people of North Merritt Island work through this flooding and development issues in a positive and productive manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like you to email that to me, if you could. Okay. Thank you.
Me as well, if you would.
I'm going to mail it to everybody. I just love finding it.
Okay, Commissioner Loebert?
So I think there are a few things to look at here, but first is to a point that Mr. Ratterman brought up with respect to whether there's a consequence for a PE either falsely or presumably negligently certifying something. I was going to ask Mr. Denninghoff, because I'm sure there's some regulatory body in Tallahassee that has purview or control over that. I just don't know which it would be.
The state has a State Board of Professional Engineers, and if somebody wanted to complain about a professional engineer, they can file a complaint there. And then there are certain, there's limitations too, but there are civil liabilities associated with engineers who do not provide the appropriate level of service that's necessary to substantiate their work product.
I appreciate that. Now, looking at these again, I think there are a few different things. I don't think anything says that we have to accept one or the other. At an absolute dead minimum, I think the smartest thing to do would be to go with option 2 as sort of a baseline, and then from there, determine which, if any, of the other options we want to pursue. And essentially, option 2, just for the benefit of the audience that may not have a copy of the agenda, it says, "Current code states that development shall cause no adverse impact to other properties. This provision could be modified to require either compensatory storage or certification by the engineer supporting. There will be no adverse impacts due to any improvements planned for any parcel seeking a permit. Implementation of this code change could be county-wide, except incorporated, I'm sorry, except incorporated areas are limited to North Merritt Island." And then it talks in that as well about directing staff to draft code changes and return to the board. I would propose at a minimum that we implement that with respect to all of the property in North Merritt Island north of Hall Road. I do like the idea down the road of moving toward option 5, but I don't know that we have, based on what I've heard from Mr. Denninghoff, an adequate basis to get there yet, and also concerns have been identified by legal on that as well. I like that, I just don't know that we're there yet. I think the first option, I'm sorry, the second option here, so modifying the code to require compliance with current code that I just read, with it applying north of Hall Road, I would make that my initial motion, and I'd like to discuss this partial moratorium as well and see where folks are at with it, to determine whether or not there needs to be a follow-up motion to propose that as well.
South, I'm sorry. Would that be south of 405?
Yes, so up to the point of 405, so north of Hall, up to 405. That's my initial motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Loebert. Commissioner... Second by Commissioner Tobias. Commissioner Pritchett?
Commissioner Loebert, I will vote with that also. My question is, is how is that different than what it was written? Because I don't know if there is any incorporated areas. Is that something different in here that I need to think about differently?
Well, I think that would be more of a concern if it applied countywide. But since I'm limiting it to north of Hall Road, up to the point of State Road 405, I don't believe there's anything incorporated in that stretch.
Okay, I didn't either. So you're just defining the area a little more, you're just defining it a little bit better?
Yes, and I mean, if there are other areas in folks' districts that they want to include in this as well, I'm happy to amend it to include those areas in your own districts that you have concerns about, but this is the one I know of.
This could be a good test one here.
I don't mind being the guinea pig, if this helps.
No, I think this, I got very comfortable with that very quickly when I read through it, so I think this could be a wonderful thing, because this way, they're going to have to show that they're able to maintain their own water. So I think this is a good step in that direction.
I mean, when I say dead minimum, I don't, maybe that's not the best way to phrase that, I think this is going to have a profound impact. As a dead minimum, this is a pretty effective dead minimum.
It's responsible.
But unless there's further discussion, maybe we call the question on that one?
Okay, that's it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And then looking at this moratorium, I would be in favor of putting a 364-day moratorium as listed here, but I just don't know where other folks are on it, so I was hoping I could get a little bit of input from my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, sir, I think since we just did 2, that it's doing the same thing, because the moratorium would have done the same thing, the engineer would have to, could do it unless the engineer can demonstrate there's no increased volume to water discharge and that the property on the floodplains provide compens, I'm not going to try to say that right now, storage. So I think it's really kind of doing the same thing. I think number 2 should be able to cover that situation, but it's a little bit cleaner and less wordy, so.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not a professional engineer, so I'm going to pump this one over to a professional engineer, Mr. Denninghoff. First of all, I'd like to qualify you as a gator, I mean, as an expert. You being a gator probably does that. My question is, are two, I think 2 and 3 are different from my reading of it. Am I correct or incorrect in that?
I think that the fundamental difference between 2 and 3 is that part of the code currently states that you can't have a negative impact on other people's property in the sense of flooding. And then it goes on to provide definitions and other criteria, but that's the premise of the whole portion of the code. The option 3 basically presumes that if you're not doing items 1 and 2, that you have a real high probability of doing just that, causing a negative impact to other properties. And the, so, but it allows an out, that if you do provide the necessary technical analysis to demonstrate that you're not having that negative impact, you can go forward. And to try to underscore it just a little bit differently, currently, we don't, we have what are called presumptive criteria with our stormwater drainage requirements, meaning that if you satisfy certain requirements, then you're presumed to not have a negative impact. Although the actual calculations don't demonstrate that, and so falling back on that principle underlying reason for the code, no negative impact, we would say under option 2 or option 3, that you would have to demonstrate that at a much higher level than what you currently would have to do without what we're proposing in either option 1 or, excuse me, option 2 or option 3. So there's slight difference between them, but the end result is that you would be allowed to move forward with the development, but you'd have to go through an extensive, much more difficult than currently is available type of effort to get your design approved.
Madam Chair, follow up?
Go ahead.
Thank you. And I'd like to also touch on option number 5. It seemed a little bit more complicated than what we'd initially thought last time. Can you give me an idea on, should we give you direction to go ahead with the estering to riverine? How long it's, you know, it looks like there's county code and comprehensive plan. How long would that realistically take before we could functionally make that difference?
The, those changes to the comp plan and the code would require, well, it would be a text modification to the comp plan, which can only be done at certain times of the year, so there'd be automatic delays associated with getting that done. There's public hearing process that you have to go through in order to complete all of that, and then, of course, the land development regulations would then have to be modified. And so you'd have to wait for the comp plan portion of it to be completed before you could actually do that. So there's a whole lot of convoluted path that you have to go through in order to complete option 5, although ultimately, we would probably go there based on the findings of the study that we're working on, I would suspect, but we would have that, the technical basis to support it, rather than just jumping straight into it.
So my question, Madam Chair, follow up?
Yeah.
So if the study comes back in late 2020, and your expert opinion holds solid that this actually is a riverine as opposed to an estering, would we then still have to go through that long process at that point?
I think the simple answer is yes, but I, again, we don't have the technical support for that, so I'm making an assumption at that point, but I would suspect that we would wind up having to go through that as well. Let me clarify one thing about the riverine/estering thing. It, by definition, under the comp plan and under the code, it is an estering, and North Merritt Island is an estering floodplain because it drains into a saltwater body, not a freshwater body. The definition of a riverine is that it drains into a freshwater body. But the basis of the reason for the distinction between estering and riverine is that estering, you can't really induce flooding by filling land and developing it. Riverine, however, you can. In this case, North Merritt Island behaves, as far as the flooding is concerned, it behaves like a riverine floodplain rather than an estering one. And I don't know if that helps with our discussion from the last meeting or not, but I wanted to make that distinction. It's kind of a hybrid between the two.
One final question. So I guess it boils down to this, because there's a couple of variables that I don't understand, and that would be many variables, to be clear, but the amount of staff time that would take to put into this change that you're talking about. If you believe that there's a probable likelihood that it will come out a riverine as opposed to an estering, is it worth putting in the staff time ahead of time, so when that comes out, that we can make that immediate change? If it's 50/50 and it requires hundreds of hours, it may not be worth it. But if you believe that it's... But if you believe that it's 70 or 80 or 90 percent likelihood, and this is something that requires 10 hours, then it probably is. I just want to put the folks in Merritt Island, that we can get them help as soon as possible, and it would be absolutely horrific if this came back and we would have to go through this, we'd have to extend this another year. So based on the staff time that's involved in this and the likelihood of the esterine versus riverine, is it, I know, I'm trying to keep this away from a policy question, but from a financial perspective, does it make sense?
I think it's going to be a substantial effort. So I think perhaps a better approach might be to allow us to start getting the results back from the study, and as we see that evolve, then we might be able to have a better idea of exactly how we'd want to proceed with things such as a comp plan change or a land development regulation change. It may be that we move away from looking at North Merritt Island as esterine or riverine, but just we have this model, and we are, you know, we're going to use this model, and that's going to be the standard that the engineers are going to have to apply any proposed development to in order to demonstrate that they're not having a negative impact on the floodplain.
So you'll get results, not conclusive results, but you'll get updates or as you...
Yeah, we will be in consultation with the consultants as we're going along. There's going to be some preliminary results that will be available to us, and we'll start to get a real good feel for how things are evolving and just how sensitive the floodplain is, and that's going to probably speak very strongly or powerfully to how it is we want to move forward.
Okay. Madam Chair, given Mr. Denninghoff's opinion here, I would be inclined to support Commissioner Loeb, should he go with option three? If he decides that that's not in the best interest, then I would respect that as well. However, I would like to make a motion, not on, not option five, but certainly give Mr. Denninghoff and staff the authority to begin this process as they get results, as they get results back, so they can act as soon as possible and not have to wait the, what could be the better part of a year after we get those results back.
Second.
Okay, did you get that, as far as what he's asking for? I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias, second by Commissioner Loeb. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I don't know. I think that might be something we should wait on because it really is a hybrid, like you said, Mr. Denninghoff. And most of the drainage from the Merritt Island waterplain behaves the way a riverine is expected, but the ditch water's salty a lot of the times, and it connects to the estuary like an estuary and floodplain. So I think you guys are going to have to get that data to figure it out, to know what to do, and I think, my guess is, as you guys are getting it, you're going to come and make recommendations of what you think needs to be done. So I'm not there yet. I'm still waiting on the study, but I am very comfortable with making sure the engineers are proving they're not causing any harm. So I'm not going to support that today either.
Commissioner Loeb?
Well, one of the other items, I think just maybe the attorney and me is picking up on, one of the differences between two and three that wasn't discussed, that kind of offsets the additional leniency or possible leniency in three, is that it's an and whereas two is an or. So three requires both an engineer to certify and to have compensatory storage. Two requires compensatory storage or the certification.
Just do both.
So my thought is, we can, I can go ahead and make another motion to essentially modify my prior motion or to implement an and requirement instead of an or, which is the way that two read. So I'll go ahead and do that, just in an abundance of caution. So I'll go ahead and move to modify our prior action to require both certification by an engineer and compensatory storage.
I'll second that.
Are you seconding the?
The change.
The change, but then...
I seconded the other one. When he made the motion on two before, I think I seconded it.
But I think he, did you make a motion on two, or did you make a motion on a couple of options?
It was really on two. So basically, whereas we approved two roughly as it was written specifying the specific area being north of Hall and south of, what did we say?
405.
405. Now, this is the same exact everything with the exception of needing...
I just want to be, I think there's like a little confusion on which items because...
It was Mr. Tobias. I thought I...
Because wasn't it two items, two options that Tobias made? Right.
Okay, maybe I should hold off on mine. Let's maybe discuss his first.
We have a motion and a second, but we didn't call for a vote yet because I think we're still talking.
Yeah, probably.
And so I think there's confusion on which motion is on the floor versus...
So you want me to make the motion again, just for clarity's sake?
Well, I want to hear from Commissioner Smith.
Certainly, no, that's fine.
Only because I don't want it to get lost.
Absolutely. That was on me, I'm sorry.
I mean, I can talk too, I don't, I don't... See, I like the compensatory storage option, obviously, and obviously a certified engineer. I just, I think we're throwing like moratorium in there so we feel good about not doing it if we're already, because it's easier, at least in my opinion, to put the compensatory requirement in there, the engineering requirement, certification requirement in there, and to, we need to get that small area scale study back before we do anything, before we start, you know, making all kinds of rules that we don't understand the impacts. So I'll support anything, or I'll support measures, or, that's why maybe we should go through each option, because maybe one or two options passes, but they don't pass as a package. Because I'm not going to, I'm not going to support a moratorium because I think that that's, you know, going, getting a little crazy. I think compensatory storage is the answer, at least for now, until we get that information back.
Right, and I mean, all this is designed to do is to bridge the gap between how we get the drainage study.
And I get nervous about modifying the comp plan without that information.
I mean, if it turns out we need more, I'm happy to do more. If it turns out that less is needed, we can roll it back. I just, I want to bridge that gap, and that's really what I'm interested in doing today because we have a pretty good idea in terms of what's going on, but quite frankly, we could get the drainage study back and it could say, okay, 30 percent of it is esterine, 70 percent is riverine, and then what do we do? We've restricted, you know, a certain percentage that shouldn't have been restricted in that way. But I think in an abundance of caution, we need to do something to bridge that gap all the same. And it's not a precise science to say everything north of Hall and south of 405, but it's essentially as good as we can do at the moment.
So basically, where I'll leave that is, I'll support option two.
With the modification of it being and?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's all I'm going to support right now, at least, at least until we get that small-scale study back. That's the only thing I feel comfortable supporting at this point. So I'm just telling you where I'm at, just so you know not to count on my votes for other things. So if you want to go through each option, then you're, but you may not need my vote. I mean, depending on where everybody sits, but I'm just giving you a heads up.
I think maybe the fallback, based on what Commissioner Tobias said, is just to ask Mr. Denninghoff, and I don't think there needs to be a motion, would you start receiving any data back with respect to results from the drainage study? Just bring it to the commission, and then we can revisit this at that point. And if it's something where you have enough that you feel comfortable that it's worth putting in the man-hours, we can turn right around and then give you the authorization to do it.
And I would also like, as, and this is a Mr. Abate move, but I would also like the cost with that as well, like the dollar amounts for each thing, that staff time or whatever estimates as part of our agenda or part of the discussion, staff report. Because some of these items are in the several hundred thousand, and, you know, I could easily argue, yeah, in my area, I've got a mess in India Atlantic that I would love to fix, and I'd love to do a study there to find out how to fix it. Some areas are unfixable, I mean, we know that, but, I mean, I, I'll fight for India Atlantic if I, you know, if I'm going to support Merritt Island.
I get it, I get it.
Yeah.
Okay, is that a motion, Commissioner Loeb, with the and?
Yeah, does the clerk have that? Okay, so let me, let me repeat it. So essentially, whereas before what I voted, what we voted and approved was...
So can we, can we just officially wipe the motions off? That's, I mean, can we withdraw the motions?
I think we already, okay, so anything that hasn't been voted on, I'll go ahead and withdraw, and then...
I'll withdraw whatever.
All right, now we're clean.
So everybody's withdrawn.
So essentially, what I'm, what I'm moving to do now is to approve, even though we've already approved option two, to approve two with the same geographic distinction, so north of Hall Road and south of 405 or up to 405. But instead of it reading compensatory storage or certification by the engineer, it'll read and. So essentially, it's requiring both.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I think that also addresses Mr. Raderman's concern that if the engineer is not going to do what they ought to be doing, there's a fallback because it's not either or in how it's and.
Okay, did you want to add anything else?
Well, I don't know that, I mean, certainly from you and Commissioner Pritchett, I get the strong opinion that I know where you are. I guess it depends on Commissioner Smith and what he feels on this. I think there's some legal concerns with four and five, one of them much more so than the other.
Right.
You know, the only other one that I would be interested in at this point is looking at leasing development rights. Obviously, we can't say this particular property or that particular property. I would have to defer to staff as to whether they want to propose something to us, if they think it would be beneficial and what the cost would be. I would, you know, I'd certainly like to see that, to have costs and options made available to the board to take a look at. But to say that you can spend X or Y on that when we don't know what it is that we're looking at except the geographic area, it's a little tough. So I don't know if we really need a formal motion at this point.
Okay.
I mean, I guess I'll defer to Mr. Denninghoff. If you feel comfortable bringing us some options, if there are particular tracts of land that you think that we can lease development rights on or that might be worth exploring, if you feel comfortable bringing it back based on that, you know, that would be good with me. Otherwise, I can make a motion.
I think it's, well, there's two different parts on option six. One is to buy properties. Those could be properties that would be very flood-prone and that we don't believe we're going to be able to stop from flooding at all. And then the other would be to buy the development rights or actual property, buy the property itself, undeveloped property, which we think is going to have a high probability of a very negative impact, which I think is what you were anticipating. The, I don't think we would have any problem coming back to you with certain development rights purchases that might come up. I would just warn that one maybe unintended consequence of that would be that everybody that has a piece of swamp land that they might like to make a little bit of money on might come up and try to ask us for that. So there's, I would, I would, I would suggest that there are parcels that people would claim are developable but may not be. There's going to be other ones that are in between and have good potential for development. So it'd be difficult to distinguish between the two.
Let me, let me put it a little differently, because I don't want people coming out to the county with their handout for something like this. I'd rather this be staff-driven, where staff identifies particular properties or locations where there might be a value. I don't, you know, I don't give any stock to someone knocking on your door and saying, hey, do you guys want to buy my property? I'd rather you approach them, because I think that's where you really are able to identify the areas where we could realize some bang for the buck on it. But I, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to do something that you're not comfortable with or that you think is counterproductive for some reason that has yet to occur to me.
I'll wait until we get the study back.
Mr. Abate?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, part of the other concern is, you know, we have other areas in the county that are similar, and so funding will be an issue not only for the North Merritt Island, but there's other areas, Cocoa, several other areas where we have a similar property. So that's something we just need to take into consideration as well.
I understand. It sounds like, you know, just doing some basic addition here. I don't know that I'm going to make any headway with respect to the rest of it at this point. I think there are a couple that I have concerns about, one in particular, but it looks like there's another light here.
Commissioner Tobias? Can we be done with this issue now?
Yeah, I would just, Madam Chair, I just request that Mr. Denninghoff keep all of us on board with the returns that come back from the study. I didn't realize anything would come early from that study. So you probably are the only one that is, has the ability to be able to interpret that data. So if you keep us abreast of that, and should it hit that tipping point where you believe it is most likely to go riverine as opposed to esterine, and it's worth a staff amount of time, I think that that would be appropriate. So, you know, we find out, we don't find out in the end of 2020, and we have to look at the people and the eyes in North Merritt Island and tell them, hey, listen, it's going to take another year. I think that would be completely unfair. So if you can keep us abreast of that, that shouldn't cost any extra staff time, and then we will make the determination which way to go from there.
I think we can do that.
Thank you.
Chair, may I ask a question?
Sure.
On the motion that was approved, bringing back code changes per option two, do you want us to come back with legislative intent, or is this legislative intent, and you want us to come back with proposed code and start the public hearing process?
I'm happy to waive legislative intent, but I defer to other folks on where they're at.
I'm fine with that. I think at some point, when it's part of the agenda, and then when you ask for legislative intent, it's a waste of everybody's time, and it's a waste of getting this implemented for your district. So I'm fine with that.
Do we need a motion, Miss Bentley?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move to waive legislative intent as it applies to this prior item that was just approved.
Motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Tobias with the Brevard County logo item.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Let's see if I can get this to work. There's too many buttons. Great. Last February brought before the board the issues of our county logo and the lack of compliance with current ADA regulations. I mentioned that I would be soliciting submissions from our citizens for possible options to replace our current logo. I've included them in this PowerPoint. These are all from citizens. It's amazing the amount of work and time and effort that went into this. There's a total of 72 logos from 24 artists across the county. I'm not asking the board to select a logo today. I'm just asking the board to look at these submissions so we can hopefully make a decision or a direction as we move forward. There's two issues that come up. One would be liability, and while there may, while anyone may not be able to show loss on liability, I think the larger issue is accessibility. And I think these logos, or the ones that would meet ADA compliance, would provide more accessibility to our residents. So if I can, I don't even know where I point this darn thing.
I think its radio frequency shouldn't matter. Try that one? No? Let me see. Here we go. Maybe? Battery may be dead? Yeah, I did turn it on, but the battery, the battery may be dead on it.
Oh, okay.
Is it plugged in?
Triple As?
Do it by hand.
Just pointed it on, then.
Yeah. Just point it.
You'll see that I've updated the year to reflect, I don't know, accuracy as far as when Brevard County actually became a county. So anyway, there's, again, 70 some of these that meet, and per Commissioner Pritchett's suggestion, changing some colors that would be more ADA compliant. It's amazing the talent we have in Brevard County that came up with this. The upper right-hand corner, I had nothing to do with the gator colors or...
Right.
But what I would ask, I know this is a busy meeting, but what I'd ask the board to look over this and hopefully send some, you know, suggestions, I guess would be to legal department on this, to whether or not they're ADA compliant. I haven't checked these as far as ADA compliance, but they're closer than what we have today, and I think accessibility certainly should be a top priority of the commission for people with all abilities.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Eden, what makes our logo not ADA compliant?
It's the color. There needs to be a bigger difference between the colors.
So if we just changed one of those colors a little bit, it would make it ADA compliant?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Tobias, you have brought so many good ideas to the board, this is not one of my favorites. Because I really like our logo. So I think my vote's going to be to stay with the one we have, maybe darken the colors if we need to, but I love the logo. the one we have, maybe darken the colors if we need to, but I love the logo we have right now. It's clean, crisp, and, you know, it's not overpowering. And not that I don't like the Gators, but if you had maybe gold and black for Knights, you might have had my attention a little bit better. But, um, black and gold wouldn't be?
Yeah, it would.
Ah, you just sound like the Knights. Go Knights. So, anyways, again, you bring a lot of great ideas. It's right out there with Commissioner Lober's, one he brought last week that poked fun with him a little. But I, I like our, our current logo now. If we need to darken it up to make it more in compliant, I'm good with that, but I, I'm not going to vote to change our logo. I, I just, I think it's beautiful.
Commissioner Lober?
A couple of things. First off, I did take note, and I think it was possibly either inadvertent or maybe it was seeing if we were checking, there are four logos that have 1854 and the date on the proposal. There's a block of four of them. That said, you know, I would tend to agree, the less that we have to change, the better. I talked to staff about this one because frankly, some of the logos are pretty good that were submitted, but the cost to change them seems to be a little more than negligible. And when I say that, if you think about all that's involved, not just the obvious stuff like business cards and T-shirts, many of which staff members pay out of their own pocket to buy, but even the garbage cans that we have that have the county logo on them that are designed to last a decade, if we went ahead and replaced all of them outright, that would be a tremendous cost. If we phased them out and only put the new ones in, then we have a period of years where we have one logo and the other, other logo where it's not entirely clear. I, I'm not opposed to making it more ADA compliant or making it ADA compliant by increasing the contrast on the existing logo. That seems to make sense. But I, I just don't know that I want to spend money on something that would be nice. And if we can go back, sure, I would, I would rather have one of these instead of what we've got, but I, I just don't know that it's there. If we do though, if we do move forward, I would say the other thing to keep in mind is whoever the artist is or artists, we would have to make sure that we get whatever rights to use the logo from those folks that we need to get because I, I don't want to do something that seems smart and then get sued for it and owe them a, you know, some sizable amount of money.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask a question of Ms. Bentley. Is a logo required to be ADA compliant, or is there even an ADA compliance for a logo?
Well, technically, it should be compliant. However, the issue is just color contrast and it doesn't convey information, and therefore, there's no liability associated with it. It's considered a decoration, so it really doesn't create the, the trigger for liability. I think that's why Commissioner Tabia was talking about accessibility as opposed to information, that sort of thing.
That's good information.
So, we don't need it. So, let's put this to bed finally.
Ms. Bentley, so do, do we need to change the logo to be ADA compliant? I guess it depends on your interpretation of the law because it says it has to have a contrast.
Right. There's technical and then there's liability. So, there's no, there's no information being transmitted. So, you're really exempt because it's primarily decoration.
So, it would probably make more sense to change it as it's being replaced. If we're going to change, say, the colors, if we kept the logo the same, then it would be to go through the enormous expense of changing everything that we have because we're trying to be more ADA compliant.
Right. We're, yes, we don't see significant liability associated with the slower path.
So, could I make a suggestion?
So, you weigh the risk versus, versus, I mean, the risk of expending a bunch of money now as opposed to working it in over time. So, making the effort and moving towards ADA compliance without breaking the bank on unnecessary expenditures.
How about if we just changed the green inside the B to red?
How would you change it?
Not red.
Like a light, light, like a light green.
Then you would have red and blue.
How about purple, something?
How about a lime, like a, like a fluorescent green?
Well, we, we looked at colors yesterday, and it has to be a dark green.
Dark green would be better, not red.
Would dark green do it, or is that putting us in a worse spot?
Or neon lime green, you know?
I think we need to get some folks to look at it and various contrast arrangements and then bring it back.
I'd like to know who judges that.
BCA.
The BCA.
Sorry, sorry. I'm glad we haven't lost that sense of humor.
We'll send it to the TDC.
Just add a little dark green so it doesn't shock anybody with the change.
Yeah. Commissioner Tabia?
Frank, do you, did you need something first?
Yeah, I did have a comment, and that is, you know, we're talking about the colors, but the logo itself, for example, someone mentioned the, being on the wastewater or waste cans. Well, it depends on what the color in the background is. So, there, where we have color in the background is green and it's white, it's totally ADA compliant. So, the issue of the colors is only because you're looking at certain colors that were used in certain arrangements. So, I think the, the staff direction I'm hearing is make sure as many of the logos that we can make them ADA compliant, we make them with color contrast is an issue. And we can look at that either in terms of the background or intensifying some of them. So, we will, we will be moving in that direction, you know, unless the board decides to choose a different logo and then we'll implement that as well.
Yeah, to be clear, I'm, I'm not asking for us to do away with our, our, our current logo on everything. I think that would be absolutely ridiculous. But I think it shows that we're moving in the right direction with ADA compliance, whether we get sued or not. It's the right thing to do is to help people with disabilities. This is, this is, it's not laughing matter. People have special needs and as a board, if it requires a color change or some, something else, our, our goal should make, should be to make government accessible for everyone. So, I, I hope that whether it's a logo or whether it's folks watching us on TV or looking at our budget online, that we want as many eyes regardless of your exceptional abilities to partake in government as, as much. So, I, I hope we at least do something.
Yeah, I don't think anybody was arguing about not moving forward. We're just maybe, you know, instead of redoing it all at once and with the enormous expenditure that that could be, instead moving in the direction of trying to get it done, you know, as, as we're expending those funds. So, I don't think anybody would suggest that we don't want to be. Commissioner Lober?
Yeah, just, just real briefly, the last thing too, looking at Mr. Burdette kind of reminded me, there is at least one constitutional officer in Brevard who I believe has a green color blindness. I know some of his employees, if they're irritated with him, will change the font and emails to green and send it out his way. But, you know, I, I don't think it's that infrequent of an issue for folks to have that. So, if we can do something, whether it's, the immediate solution that comes to mind is just make more use of the black and white logo because we have a black and white version of this, and there's certainly no question that black and white have a tremendous amount of contrast. So, if there's something that, that is a black and white document, there's no reason we need a color logo on it anyway. Even on a colored document, nothing says we have to have a colored logo. So, until such time as we can sharpen or brighten or darken some of these colors, I would just say try to use the black and white logo that we've already got. It's zero cost. The files are already on our, on our Intranet and away we go.
Good. Let's move on. Okay. So, is there, do we, just, do you have a desire, Commissioner Tabia, to formally vote or do anything, or, I mean, before we move on to the next item?
I certainly would like legal to look into, at a minimum, shade changes that would be more compliant with ADA standards.
I'm sure probably you can find that.
Do you want to make a motion, or?
I don't know if you need one. You probably don't need one. Yes, thank you. All right. Item five.
Commissions, I'll handle this one. This is the external audit, auditors. We do have as part of your package where the, the firms ended up, as, as you know, Commissioner Pritchett served on the selection committee, as did each charter officer per statute. They've, they're making their recommendations. One thing that's outstanding and what was not considered up to this point was the pricing that was done by sealed bid. We have spoke to the county attorney's office, and the way that can come into play would be if the board selects a negotiating committee and staff would suggest that it be our, our current purchasing director, Stephen Darling, along with Kathy Proffman from the clerk's office. And then if the board would like to select someone from the board, we would then have them be a negotiating committee. The firms that, and they would be, at that point, the, the county attorney's office has indicated that those, the top three sealed bids would be available for them to, to review and then negotiate with the, with the top firm. And if we can't get an agreement with that top firm, they'd move to the second firm and bring it back. We could either bring it back to the board or at that time, we could enter into the contract depending on what the board does. So, we're looking for a direction from the board, including the, the appointment of that negotiating committee with hopefully someone from the board.
Commissioner Lober?
Before we get into which, you know, which to negotiate with, I'd move that we establish a negotiation committee composed of the folks that Mr. Abate had mentioned, and preferably, I would like to see Commissioner Pritchett, if she's willing to serve on that, continue to serve on that.
I was going to request it.
Okay, so that's part of the motion then? And then to authorize them to negotiate the contract with the board selected, which will be selected momentarily.
A second?
Okay, I have a motion, a second, and I have two cards. Philip Hayes? Name and address or name and city?
Okay, my name is Philip Hayes. I live in Rockledge, Florida, and pleased to address Madam Chairman and the board. On behalf, I'm really here on behalf of my employees at Berman Hopkins. You know, personally, I did grow up in Brevard County. I've been raising my family here for the last 26 years, working hard in our business to do a lot of things, but really to preserve and create jobs for Brevard County. And really what I'm asking today is, as you look at this situation, is that you consider keeping the contract with Berman Hopkins to keep jobs here in Brevard County. And I have a couple of points I want to make because I know you have a lot on your agenda. I, I did get the opportunity to sit here and listen to your agenda, so I know that you have a lot on your minds. And I know that priorities over time change. And today, you know, looking at this issue, I just, first off, start off with, I believe we are qualified to do the audit. We were ranked number two, but we were very few points behind number one. We do have a national expert at doing it, and we've also instituted a partner rotation process on the audit. This has only been the last two years that this person has served as the audit partner. So, we've completed the, from a qualification standpoint, I believe we're there. Some of the things I heard today in discussion was cost is always an important element. I know that the, the bids are sealed, but we would basically say to you on go on record that we will match the price of the firm that you select if it's, if it's not us, or be lower than that option. So, we can do that because we believe we're efficient on the engagement. We have the expertise and the experience to do the engagement. In addition to that, I was looking at, just from, from our impact into the county, we do live here and we invest here. Our firm put over $100,000 annually into nonprofits in Brevard County. So, I believe we're a good citizen of Brevard, and all we want to do is continue to keep the jobs here. From that, from that point on, I understand you have an important decision to make, and we consider your, you know, respective roles and the authority that you serve as, as board members. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Chet Ellsworth?
Chet Ellsworth, 989 North Highway, A1A, Indian Atlantic, Florida, taxpayer. I have the same procedural objection to this procedure that you're going through as earlier, as stated on August 6, 2019. The standard by which these audits should, from a standpoint of a taxpayer, should be, that the committee shouldn't be the ones that pick the people that are, while they're under audit themselves. And this, both, both these resolutions I've looked at, the one from last week that was used was Resolution 11117. And it, it pretty much takes that out, picks some people. The only problem is, the audit committee that you voted five to nothing on didn't exist. The people weren't on the audit committee. And this one, BCC 94, goes back to an earlier date, which means that this one supersedes the other one. And it obviously, you can see why it was superseded. The people that are part of the audit committee are the people getting audited. The sheriff, the property praiser, the tax collector, the supervisor of elections. That's why that was superseded, no doubt. And in BCC 94, it calls for at least six months prior to expiration for the audit committee to convene. You're out of compliance there. Of course, I'm, I'm well aware that the council will, will waive that. Anytime you waive a, a standard by, by taking down your considerations and noncompliance, you're, you're lowering the audit standards. Last, last two weeks ago, you voted, basically like the man that just came up here said, you voted to send 1.1 billion times five years. You jumped elections with your, with your contract that you allowed, all to be sent to Whacker Drive in Chicago. RMS is located there and in Minnesota. You got a heck of a political problem. But it's all a procedure problem that needs to be get. If you, if you allow the people that are getting audited to pick the people that are doing the audit, you are in tyranny. Thank you.
Ron Conrad?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I very much appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm Ron Conrad. I would be the engagement partner with the number one ranked firm, Cherry Beckett. I just want to say a few things. One is that there is a statute, Florida statute, that specifies how the selection process is supposed to transpire, and you did follow that process that is statutorily mandated. So, there is no noncompliance here. You are in compliance by doing what you did. And so, I just want to make that clear. And also want to, you know, make it clear that you've had the firm, same firm for 40 years here at Brevard County doing the audit. And to me, there's a responsibility to the constituents that you have to make sure that there's independence. And not to say that they aren't independent by law, but 40 years is a long time. I can't even think of another firm that's been auditing government in the state of Florida for 40 years. So, we'd love to have the opportunity to work with you and to do an appropriate audit that gives you an independent, fresh perspective. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the cards I have. Commissioner Pritchett?
That was not me.
Oh, that's, and you spoke already?
We did. He made a motion, a second.
Okay.
At the same time?
You, okay. Commissioner Smith, did you want to talk?
No, I'm not going to say red. She's talking about the logo. She doesn't like my idea. Regarding this subject, I'm not going to put anybody on the spot and ask why they picked Cherry Beckett over Berman Hopkins, but I would, for my two cents' worth, Berman Hopkins, they have been doing it for 40 years. And I understand the representative from Cherry Beckett. If I was in his position, I would be saying the same thing. Give me a chance because the other guy's been there too long. But the other guy's local, and as Mr. Hayes said, they do a lot for this community. They have been doing a lot for this community for an awful long time. And to suggest that 40 years, yeah, I don't think there's a Mr. Scrooge working till he's 80 years old for Berman Hopkins. In 40 years, I'm sure they've turned over a lot of employees. So, my vote would still be for Berman Hopkins.
Commissioner Lober?
Just real briefly, the only one of us that was on the committee to even look at the selection is Commissioner Pritchett. And quite frankly, whatever direction she wants to go on this, and she was on the committee and I wasn't, that's the, that's the direction I'll be going.
Commissioner Tabia?
I'll second that also. This board wisely did away with local preference, as it drives up costs a great deal. So, local preference certainly will not be on that, because this board has done away with that foolish practice.
But he already said, the other gentleman, Mr. Hayes, already said that they would match, so that's not even an issue.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Of course it's an issue. Of cour-, it's a huge issue. And the reason is, is competition. I'll be more than willing to, if we send out, we're gonna accept the lowest bid out there from a local contractor. Anytime we go to contract, and as businessmen, I think you know this, other businesses won't spend the time and the effort to put out a bid if they know that some Tom, Dick, and Harry local can match it. So, you, the, absolutely, by the, by the, pretty soon, we'll only have local, local bidders, and that's why, I don't remember if you, but I remember this board did away with local preference.
Well, I agree with you. I, I understand. I was one of those people that voted that way, because in business, I stopped doing business as a businessman with Palm Bay, because they did that very same thing to me, twice. So, I said, okay, well, then I'm just not gonna bid anymore. But this, this is a different circumstance. The money, and it's sealed bid, it's already, it's already been done, so. But you guys have spoken, and I don't have a problem with that.
We don't know what to say.
I have every confidence in Commissioner Pritchett.
No pressure.
Yeah. I mean, other than, you know, we know that Berman does a good job. I mean, I gotta go with our appointment to the board, and if, you know, she's, I looked at the ranking sheet, and I saw that your ranking coincides with the one that ultimately was selected, you know? So, I'm gonna support you on this as well. So, with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And just to be clear, the motion was to go with, with the number-one selection?
Right.
Okay.
No, it was to go with the three. It's gotta go to open the bids, and we gotta determine. Berman Hopkins comes in, comes in with 10 bucks, and they come in with 100,000, we're gonna go with Berman. So, I'm kinda curious to see what the bids are and what we're negotiating, so.
My facetiousness was lost.
Okay. Oh, you're being facetious?
I was just kidding.
It's too late for this.
I'm sorry.
So, you're gonna be trying to turn it red here soon, too, aren't you?
I'll leave it be.
I fell for it.
Mm-hmm.
I know, I'm gonna get that back in spades.
I'll be thinking.
Okay, item J1.
Again, this is appointment to fill a vacancy on the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Citizen Oversight Committee. The committee structure consists of seven members and seven alternates representing seven fields of expertise: science, technology, economics and finance, real estate, education and outreach, tourism and lagoon advocacy. We have a vacancy in the real estate member position, with Danielle Bowden stepping down. So, the board's options are, are three. Promote Dennis Basile, who is the, who's in the alternate seat for real estate, or go to the last pool of applicants for real estate and pull from that. There is one remaining candidate, Jay Moynihan, or you can direct staff to advertise for new applicants.
Commissioner Loeb?
A few things, and I, I don't know if you've got any more information on this, but a couple of things. First off, Mr. Basile, I believe, was appointed, was it five months ago?
Yes.
And then, as far as Mr. Moynihan is concerned, did he get back with you in terms of his willingness to serve? Because we had gotten something saying he wasn't, but then you thought he was?
He, he was. He was not available to be here today, but he is very interested in serving.
All right. Now, the, the only concern I've got, I don't think we have many options internally from the folks that we have, is that we, we really try to keep this pool as wide as possible. Now, I know the board had previously advertised with a paper which will remain, remain nameless for around $2,000. I don't think there's anything that says we have to advertise. I do think it's a good idea to advertise. I would like to spend half that, if we can do it, though. I think it's worth spending a little bit, but not going to town on, on what we spend to advertise to get a new applicant pool.
Social media?
Social media would be great. You know, I'm not saying one over the other, but you could look at Hometown News, or Space Coast Daily, or even the paper that shall remain nameless. But I, I would call two or three of them up and see what they say, just to, to get an idea. And I, you know, ideally, I don't think we need to spend more than 1,000 bucks to advertise this. But I think having one, or at most, two options is, is pretty limiting, given the, the gravity of, of the work that this group does, and the amount of money that they're charged with, with overseeing. So, I, I would move to, to go ahead and re-advertise it, but I would cap it at half the amount that was spent at the initial go-around at 1,000 bucks. And I would just ask that you, you reach out to a couple of other news agencies to see what they're willing to do. And then, as our chair said, if, if you want to do something with social media as well, that's great.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Loeb. Do I have a second?
Maybe later.
All right, maybe later. So, there's a...
I'll second it.
Okay, I have two cards, too. Ms. Sullivan, Sandra Sullivan, and Pamela White is after Sandy.
She's left.
Oh, did she?
Yeah.
It's a long meeting.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. Um, one second. Shoot. It just went away on me. Okay, so I'll have to go by the brain. One of my concerns with the board, and I've attended a lot of COC meetings, is there appears to be people that do not have a background in science. There are some that do, of course. So, moving forward, I would like to ask U.S. Commissioners to even look at changing the composition of boards, or at least the qualifications. Some of the comments that have been made while at these county commissioner, uh, sorry, COC meetings, at one point, there was one off-comment made that, you know, there's only ever been 20 million gallons of sewage ever been put in the lagoons, so sewage infrastructure's not important. I mean, people need to have a science background and be able, there's a lot of scientific reports. The COC, the Save the Lagoon Plan, had hardly any cited references at all in it, and those that were there were from the 80s and 90s. I mean, certainly, the sciences coming out is much more relevant. Why do we not structure this much more like the Blue-Green-Algae Board, where we have a, a focus group of scientists on there, or at least have a science degree to be qualified to be able to sit on that board? So, I would just like your consideration to take a look at the composition of that board, and to get some more science people, or at least, at least require them to have a science degree. I mean, I'm sure there's real estate people that have a science degree, you know? People have lots of degrees, but decide to go into a different field. But I think it's very necessary for the reports, the scientific reports, and scientific research that's out there, we're making decisions, and quite frankly, it looks like there's a tremendous emphasis on, on MOC, and not enough emphasis on the infrastructure. And what we voted for as people was, we voted the, the infrastructure and the sewage treatment plants, the facilities, was in that language that we voted on. And I don't see that being representative. And I think there's a lot of scientists like Burrell, and Le Point, and, and Dame, and many others, that are pointing to the, the point source, point source solution from the, the septic tanks and the sewage systems as being, feeding the nitrogen in addition to, you know, the glass, grass clippings. But I think, I think that the sewage aspect is, is a big part of this. And I think that the, the composition right now is more of a feel-good board than it is a productive board. Thank you for listening.
No question here?
Just a couple of things. First off, and I, I'd have to defer to Ms. Bentley to get more precision on this, but my understanding is the composition, at least in part, ties into inter-local agreements that we have with, with the various municipalities. So, while we do have the ability to look at that as these vacancies come up, I don't know that we can implement a wholesale change in terms of the, the type of composition that we have on that board. The, the other thing, and I, I don't want you to, unless you want to, to name anyone during the meeting, but please send me the name of the person that said that 20-plus million gallons is...
I'll, I'll send you the video.
Yeah, if you could do that, I'd be very interested, because that's...
And if I could comment on what you just said about...
Up to the chair.
That's fine, but I just don't want this to go on too long, because we've got, like, a lot of speakers, too. So, in one meeting, for example, I brought up about infrastructure, and Courtney Barker made a comment that, would it be fair to put money into infrastructure, because some municipalities are more responsible in addressing their infrastructure needs, and other ones are less? So, if we spend the money on the ones that are less, it's not fair to the other municipalities. I think what the voters care about is that the problem with the lagoon get addressed, not that this one gets more fair than this one. So, you, you end up with the current structure of people, you know, it gets political, instead of just being focused on what the problem is and solving the problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything else, Mr. Loeb? Or is that new?
No, I think Mr. Tobias, Mr. Tobias already seconded, so...
I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem going out.
Oh, Mr. Lamb has one.
Oh. Just made it under the wire.
Let me guess, Vince Lamb, Merritt Island?
Yeah, Vince Lamb, Dragon Point, Merritt Island. I couldn't resist having, stepping up on this one. Dennis Basile is the, is the president of the Board of Realtors of Brevard County, and having him on this, on the Citizens Oversight Committee is extremely powerful, because, you know, he represents the Realtors, and he carries the word back to the Realtors, and tremendously valuable. Now, he's on there as the alternate, and the normal thing that we have done with the COC, or that you have done with the COC in the past, is when an alternate steps down, or not, when the primary steps down, the alternate gets promoted. So, it should seem to me to be a, you know, a pretty clear-cut opportunity to promote Dennis to the, to the regular spot. The other, the other person, Jay Moynihan, that, that has stepped forward and indicated that he wanted to do this, I know him personally, and I think he's a very good candidate. And again, you know, he's representing real estate, and, and I think would be another good representative of real estate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just real briefly, I, I don't have anything against either of the individuals. I, I just would like to have a bigger applicant pool, to know that we're getting the best possible selection. They may be the best, they may be great, I, I just don't know at this point. So, I'm, I, I don't want anyone to mistakenly think that I have something against either of them, because I truly don't.
No, but your choices here are that you could either, you know, you can move Dennis up to the primary spot today and advertise for the second one, if you want more choices, or you can appoint both of them. Your choice.
Right, or, I mean, the, the concern that I have is, if he had been on for even six months, you know, I would say move him up, but he's not even been on for half a year, so I, I think advertising it...
And we, we don't want to go back and forth anymore, because we have 23 more cards and a lot more meeting. Commissioner Smith?
No, I'd like to listen to the cards.
No, I meant, if, if, that's for the next items.
Okay, well, then I would like to make a motion to...
They already have a motion on, to, he has a motion to, you know, advertise or whatever.
Did they?
Yeah. So, I'll call the question on it, but I want, I want Commissioner Smith to understand what he's voting on.
Me, too.
Yes.
Me, too.
He, yeah. Right. Can't have red on the logo, Commissioner Smith. So, you're voting on Commissioner Loeb's idea to go out?
Right.
Yeah. All right, so I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 4-1.
Yeah.
With Commissioner Smith and then nay. And then nay. All right. So, we, we continued to, so, item three, J3.
This item, Commissioners, is about the board's legislative program for our legislative delegation. You do have as an attachment the items that staff developed for legislative initiatives for 2020. That meeting is going to be held on September 25th at, in Port Canaveral, at Port Canaveral. So, we're looking for the board's input and hopefully approval of the items. They were many of the same items, similar items, to what we've had in past years, including Brevard Infrastructure, including the TPO's recommendations, dealing with natural resources and the lagoon, in a variety of areas, similar to this morning, continued efforts to get funding for the EOC, agritourism, and then some housing and human service items, and tourist development, also dealing in the area of Indian River Lagoon cost-sharing opportunities. So, that's what we have on there. And then, the other thing we'd ask the board to do outside of providing any input and hopefully approval of this, would be to determine whether or not any board member wants to speak on behalf of the board at the, at, at that legislative delegation meeting, or do what we did last year, which was just submit it to the delegation in writing.
Okay, I'm gonna take a card first. Lou Kotnick? Did Lou leave?
I think he did step out. He was behind Vince before.
Okay. I don't see him.
No.
All right. So, I don't have any more cards, I just have the one. So, if anybody's filled out a card ever, and it gets missed, or because it gets misnumbered, raise your hand, and then I'll call on you, and we'll get it right. I don't want to miss anybody if they just got numbered incorrectly. All right, Commissioner Loeb?
Just real briefly, my only point I want to make on this is, I think it might be good to send someone to the delegation. I don't know that we have to each and every time, but since we didn't last year, it might be good this year. And if no one else wants to do it, I'm happy to do it. If someone else wants to do it, I'm happy not to do it, but I would like someone to go from the commission.
I think you would be a good choice.
Fair enough.
I think so, too. Commissioner Pritchett?
I was gonna make a motion, send Commissioner Loeb.
Okay, fair enough.
All right, is everybody okay with the legislative initiatives?
I think it's good.
All right. All right, so, Commissioner Pritchett has a motion, and Commissioner Smith second to send Commissioner Loeb to the delegation.
Should I wear a tie?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Item four?
All right. I'm looking forward to this one.
Five minutes first? Okay. She's got her name up.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Loeb, you brought this on, so I just want to say, because we have a lot of cards with this.
Yeah.
I don't support biosolids, and I'm not sure what, what everybody's thoughts is on, on this item, but I know it's a very emotional heated subject, so I was just kinda hoping this would help the crowd a little bit, because a lot of times, they'll come out mad at us on something that we're already in agreement with. So, I just wanted to start out by saying, I, I'm not in favor of biosolids, I don't really like it. There's probably something better we can use and, and treat things, especially since staff told me most of the ones we're getting now are coming up from the south. And, and, and plus, the problem that's going on right now with people banning biosolids, if, if we don't do something soon, we're gonna see a lot of people trying to use this area for them. So, I'm in support with getting rid of biosolids. I'm not sure how we go about doing it, but I, I think it might be the responsible thing to do in the day we're in.
Commissioner Loeb?
All right, perfect. No, I, I just want to say a couple of things. Obviously, there's, there's plenty of info on the agenda item. There are a few different reasons that I put this up here. The one that's nearest and dearest to me is the nutrient loading on the lagoon. Obviously, for, for those of folks that, that are here that aren't really too well-versed on this, and that may be here for other items, but are nonetheless interested, the, the fact is, biosolids, if you go to any of, well, I shouldn't say any, many of the sewage treatment facilities that are out there, essentially, the end product that's dehydrated, that's what they call biosolids. So, it's a sexy way of saying something, and it's not as, it's not as pretty as a Tesla or as something along those lines, but it's, it's basically dehydrated crap, for want of a better term. So, it's, it's great in terms of being loaded with nitrogen and loaded with phosphorus, and by extension, being an excellent fertilizer, but for that same reason, it's very detrimental when it ends up getting into the watershed. Now, I don't know if other folks have noticed, I imagine many of you have, we've had a lot of rain recently. I can't tell you when these folks do and don't apply biosolids, but anytime you get water coming down, guess what happens to anything sitting on the surface of the land? Oftentimes, when you have irrigation, when we don't have rain, which typically, for anyone growing anything, if you're looking for it to, to prosper and to do well, and to have a good crop, you're gonna irrigate if we don't have rain. Again, what happens with everything sitting on the surface? It's gonna end up washing down. And I'm not saying that 15 miles out, there's necessarily the same impact as there is five seconds away from the lagoon, but by and large, the vast majority of these areas are interconnected. So, it may have to travel away, as we even talked about the connection earlier in this meeting, from Melbourne Tillman to the lagoon indirectly through Turkey Creek. The, the fact is, I don't think this stuff is really good anywhere. That's my concern with it, there are other concerns. You hear folks talk about grade B biosolids, grade A biosolids, and when you look into that, I'm not the scientist when it comes to that, but another area of, of concern for my constituents is that we don't have a restriction that makes, or that mandates for my constituents is that we don't have a restriction that makes, or that mandates that only pathogen-free biosolids are put down. Now, I'm not saying that therefore we're at a substantial risk of contracting E. coli or some kind of fecal coliform if we go into the water, but all else equal, it's not the safest possible thing to be putting down. I can't tell you to an absolute certainty that we'll have any number of people get ill. We may not have anyone get ill as a result, but the question is how much of a chance you want to take. There are, there are two different considerations in, in sort of a macro sense. You've got two different areas where biosolids are being deposited, for want of a better term, in Brevard County in terms of their end location. And I, I don't mean where they run off after rain or, or irrigation ends up flooding them out, but they're either put into a lined landfill, or alternatively, they're spread out on the gra, on the grounds for, for, for crops, basically to serve as an excellent fertilizer. I'm sure they're a great fertilizer. So, in talking with, with staff, both natural resources and solid waste management, I was thinking at first of, of disincentivizing or even stopping accepting biosolids in the landfill. And what was quickly brought to my attention was that would be stupid, maybe a good idea, but, you know, not the best idea because if we don't accept them, the next question, which is logical, is then where do they go? And the next closest location, or one of the next closest locations that's the likely fallback is Osceola County. And again, depending on where it's introduced into the system, if it ends up going into the water and coming back to us, or it ends up in another lined landfill, we're not really doing anything that much better. So, you know, what this focuses on is on the application to lands, because I believe the, the vast majority of any sort of nutrient loading that we see or, or could potentially even see as a result of biosolids is as a result of them being applied to lands, not to lined landfills. So, with respect to this, I would ask at a minimum at the end of this, after we have public comment, that at least for those of us who don't want this in our districts, that at a dead minimum, we ban it to those of us, to our, our individual districts where we don't want them. If you want them in your district, you know, I'm not thrilled with it, but I could potentially live with it because I think any step to getting this out of our system and out of our county is a good step. I'd love to see this banned from the whole county, but frankly, if it's just D2 and whoever else wants to jump on board, you know, I'd, I'd love to see that. I, I will throw out one plug, just because I think that some folks have gotten some negative publicity by some of my constituents. I did meet with, with Steve Crisifoli and Bud Crisifoli recently on this, partially to ask them not to oppose it, but they were, they were very good in dealing with this. I know that they care about the community. I know that they've been made out to be boogeymen on account of the property density issue that came up recently. So, I, I do want to give them a plug and say that, you know, they didn't fight me on this at all. They certainly have a good swath of agricultural land, and it, it was not a problem insofar as district too, for them to, to do what's in the citizen's best interest. So, that's why they're not here objecting, and I, I applaud them for that. But with that, I'll, I'll open it up for public comment.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to ban the application of biosolids to lands in Brevard County, Florida.
Second.
I'll second, second by Commissioner Loeb. Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Loeb. All right.
Can we vote and then do cards?
Commissioner Tobias?
We could save a lot of time.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can, can I just ask legal, Ms. Bentley, whether or not we have the ability to do this?
There is a significant question on that. It can be argued both ways. Being cautious, we would recommend an attorney general opinion. If you wish to proceed, however, there, the, the issue that we have most recently is the, the adoption of legislation that allows attorney's fees in the event there's an area that's preempted to the state. And that's the question, is it preempted? That's where we have the two arguments. But under that new bill, there's a notice procedure, so if someone wants to challenge you and say that there is a preemption issue, you have thirty days to, thirty to sixty days to repeal. So, you might be challenged, but you do have an opportunity to back out if there's an issue there. I can't give you an absolute bright-line answer on the preemption issue. It hasn't been tested, it was adopted in July, we've had, got no case law on it whatsoever. That's why I was suggesting the attorney general opinion as a cautious approach.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, just a follow-up because I didn't understand thirty, sixty days. So, sort of like eminent domain, we're responsible for the other side's legal. However, if someone is to bring a challenge, we would then have thirty days to meet, to